I think Counselor Hooker, oh no, she's on, okay, perfect.
Are we waiting for Dawn? So are we just waiting for Dawn?
I believe so. Was she not there yet?
Not sure.
No, I haven't seen her.
Yeah. Haven't seen her name pop up.
Sorry, guys. Dawn Kenyon is on her way. I had a recent surgery, so I felt that I wasn't ready to run the meeting today. So I asked her to run the meeting in my place today, and she forgot that the meeting started at 6:00. And so she just now left her house. Luckily, she lives pretty close, so she'll be there in just a couple of minutes. I apologize again.
Thank you, Jackie. For turning on the recorder. I will call this meeting to order at 6:10 PM on October 6th, and we'll stand for the pleasurable meeting. Hey, Jackie, can you turn the roll?
It's gonna mute.
Thank you.
Counselor Coker.
Here. Here.
Counselor Bjarnsen.
Here.
Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Hollitt.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
I see his name on there.
Excuse me, I was muted. I'm here.
Is that everyone? Yeah. Thank you. Does anyone have any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? Um, Mayor Hollitt, I didn't see any notes from you. Did you have any adjustments or additions?
No, I don't. Thanks for asking, Dawn. I just want to let the record show that I'm not at the meeting today due to a recent surgery.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll go into public comment then. Jackie, do you have anyone online that's got a hand raised for public comment?
I'll change.
Okay, we do. Dan Barclay, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Dan Barclay, 47501 Highway 58. Mayor and Council, this subject that hasn't been broached that I know of recently. As of commencement of this meeting, the annual required by law audit for FY 2021 has yet to be completed and filed with the Secretary of State. We were told in late June that it was going to be done in July. Then at the Audit Committee meeting in August, the 8th, I believe, 99% from the auditors, that it had one hoop to go through, being the last level with the auditors, and it would be ready by quote-unquote "the end of the month." Now that we're in October, and should be starting the FY 122 audit, when the previous audit has not yet been completed or filed, regardless of what caused the delays, it's required by law, we're tense on it. We've got one coming up. We've only budgeted, that I can tell, about $14,300 out of the FY 2021 budget for audit and accounting. And could somebody give a real, factual, honest answer? When this city can expect a legally required document that's going to be filed with the Secretary of State, instead of in June saying July, and August saying September, and here we are, October. So are we going to end up with two lapsed audits, or just the one? And that's my question.
Thank you, Dan, and I see James shaking his head, so I'd like to call on James to answer that.
Yeah, I'll actually let Colleen answer it. Yes, we are addressing that, and I'll let Colleen answer that specifically.
Yeah, so the audit is still, we have the new meeting that is supposed to go through with next Friday with the auditors. We have been reaching out to them, we have been in contact with them. It's out of our control how fast or slow they're working, but we are on them, and we do have, hopefully, a meeting this coming Friday. Not tomorrow, next week. We were supposed to have one tomorrow, which they pushed off because they still weren't ready. So all in all, really, everybody, it's probably going to push it to where the next audit is going to be late as well, if this is how slowly they work, so.
Which is why, as you recall, council voted to do an RFP for a new auditing firm.
Exactly. We have had us on that.
The RFP has not gone out yet.
Okay. And just for one added bit of clarification, I can attest that we have been in constant communication, and there's been several meetings scheduled that have all been canceled by our auditors. What did you say the new date is, October 13th?
The 14th, Friday the 14th.
I can also attest to that we've had multiple reasons why they've had to cancel and continually pushing it off. And I can say that back, I believe it was in February or March, we had a whole list of reasons why they said it wasn't done yet, and that it would be done any day now. And so I think, I just want to say that all of us appreciate your concern, Mr. Barclay, and we feel the exact same way, and that is why we will be looking for a new auditing firm.
Exactly. Okay, is there any more public comment online? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the audience here, do we have anyone who would like to do public comments? I don't see any in the room, so we'll move on. The next section is mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations. And we've already heard that the mayor's not going to be able to be here tonight. So I'm assuming that she's not prepared for that. We'll move on to the next one, which is council comments and announcements. Does anyone in council have any comments tonight?
I do.
Bobby?
Um, just for semantics. So if Chrissy's not here, does that mean she's not participating in the meeting, or is she here and participating and just having you facilitate?
It's my understanding that I am facilitating the meeting, and because she's not feeling well, she was gonna try and be online as long as she can.
Okay. So she's participating. So she's here participating, but you're facilitating.
Exactly.
All right, just confirm.
Well, she did ask Counselor Coker first, who is our council president. And Counselor Coker, as you could tell when she answered, said she's also sick and would rather someone else would pick it up.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just asking because she said she wasn't here earlier for the meeting, and then had provided some discussion. So I just wanted to confirm and make sure our record reflects what's happening correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Bobby.
Oh, you're welcome.
Anyone else on council have any announcements or comments? Seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda.
Let me make a motion, do we even?
I actually don't remember seeing one. But we don't have a consenting agenda, so we don't have to approve anything. And then we'll go into number nine, 9.1 in business. From the City Council, is swearing in an introduction of three new police officers. Chief, I'm assuming that would be you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, first, I'll have we'll go up there, do the swearing all at the same time, but I need you to stay that point in time, and just face the camera, and introduce yourselves, and we'll give a little background. So Sergeant Madison, if you can go first.
I'm Shane Madison. Worked a career in law enforcement, almost 27 years in Washington State, and then came here to Oak Ridge. Nice to meet all of you.
Thank you.
This is Officer Barrowland, so.
My name is Mike Barrowland. I'm sure you all remember me. I started my law enforcement career with the Arizona Department of Corrections, moved up here and found my little spot in Oak Ridge in 2015, before I journeyed off to the sheriff's office for the last three years. And I'm just excited to be back. Everything seems to be the same way I left it, and I'm happy that the response to that began from the community on my return.
Kyle Lakey, our newest reserve.
Hi, I'm Kyle Lakey, fifth-generation Oregonian. I've been a police officer since 2014 with MOPD, Junction City, worked the United States Marshals a little, and now here. I would like to thank the leadership for selecting me.
And I'd like to make a note for Kyle, to give him an ad lib. Just out of attrition, we've done several reserve testing processes, and Kyle's only passed all the testing. So we've had several people through, and Kyle rose to the top, and so we're glad to have him. So. If anyone's to raise their hands, then I'll repeat after me. As a criminal justice officer, my fundamental duty is to serve humankind.
As a criminal justice officer.
To safeguard lives and property.
Safeguarding lives and property.
Protect all persons against deception.
General persons against deception.
A week against oppression or intimidation.
A week against suppression or intimidation.
And peaceful against violence or disorder.
Peaceful against violence and people.
And to respect the constitutional rights of all people, to liberty, equality, and justice.
Respect the rights of all the constitutional rights of all people.
To liberty, equality, and justice.
To liberty, equality, and justice.
I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all.
Keep my private life unsullied as an example to all.
Maintain courageous calm in the face of danger.
Maintain courageous calm in the face of danger.
Scorn or ridicule.
Scorn or ridicule.
Develop self-restraint.
Develop self-restraint.
And be constantly mindful of the welfare of others.
Be constantly mindful of the welfare of others.
Honest in thoughts.
Honestly.
Indeed.
Honestly, indeed.
In both my personal life and my official life.
In both my personal life and official life.
I will be exemplary and obeying the laws of the land.
Be exemplary and obeying the laws of the land.
And the regulations of my department.
Regulations of my department.
Whatever I see or hear of a confidential nature.
Whenever I see or hear confidential nature.
Or that is confided to me in my official capacity.
Or that is confided in me in my official capacity.
Will be kept ever secret unless revelation is necessary.
Will be kept ever secret unless revelation is necessary.
In the performance of my duties.
In the performance of my duties.
I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings.
Or never act officiously in person.
Prejudices, animosities, or friendships.
Prejudice, animosities, or friendships.
To influence my decisions.
To influence my decisions.
Without compromise and with relentlessness.
Without compromise and relentlessness.
I will uphold the laws affecting the duties of my profession.
I will uphold the laws, duties, my professional profession.
Curiously and appropriately without fear or favor.
Curiously and appropriately without fear or favor.
Malice or ill will.
Malice or ill will.
Never employing necessary force or violence.
Never employing unnecessary force or violence.
And never accepting gratuitous.
And never accepting gratuitous.
I recognize my position.
I recognize my position.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And I accept it as a public trust to be held.
And accept it in the public trust to be held.
So long as I am true to the ethics of the criminal justice system.
So long as I am true to the ethics of the criminal justice system.
I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives.
I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives.
Ideals.
Ideals.
Dedicated myself before God.
Dedicated myself before God.
To my chosen profession.
To my chosen profession.
And then, did any, I guess, did any council have any questions at all? Before we get through our part?
I don't have questions. I'm just excited. That's great. Yeah, I'm very excited.
See Valerie on there. I can attest for Valerie, I can speak for her, that she and I are very excited about to be part of ourselves.
Good. Do you anticipate, Chief, that there'll be any more reserves coming on soon?
We don't currently have, we have some interest, we don't have any currently in the pipeline, but we do have, still have, one position open for full-time, and we have one lateral person that has applied, and we have a list of entry levels, we'll be doing a potential test on here. We're hoping in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from online? I see Counselor Spleedoff has a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you, congratulations. And I wanted to find out, now, did I understand the youngest one is a reserve or part-time?
Yes, I'm a reserve.
Are you going to apply for a full-time here?
That is not my intent.
Thank you.
Any other counselors?
I'd just like to say, welcome, you guys. Really excited to have you aboard. And I think I've spoke, do I know I've spoke to all three of you and met two of you in person? So welcome, and really hope you guys enjoy Oak Ridge as much as we do.
I will say, it's Chief. Kyle hasn't really come on yet. He'll be starting to ride with Lieutenant Ritz, the reserve coordinator. But Shane and Mike both had to come on right during our fire time, and had to hit the ground running, and deal with evacuating our citizens, and having some extra stuff besides the regular police work. And they've both done a great job, and I really appreciate it, and so just wanted to say that. If you guys want a week's news.
Thank you.
Shane, you have to change.
Okay, so we'll go on to our next. 9.2 is Cassell, is that how you say it? Cassell Software Contract Options. And I'm assuming that's Colleen that's gonna present.
Hopefully, everybody got all their information the same. So we have two options for a new accounting program, which will be used by all of us in the City Hall, and there's even a few programs that the PD will be able to utilize as well. And so I'm hoping to, that you guys had time to read through the proposals, and you could come to something to get us a new accounting program that actually works correctly. And that will be easier, you know, I don't know the whole thing with the audits stuff, but they did mention in the last email to us that they had a hard time reading our reports out of our system, and the information that was pulled, because it's such, it's just such an outdated system, that it's not real report-friendly. So they said that that was also part of the issue. So that would be nice to not have that going forward with audits as well. So we have the two options, one of which is upfront, a whole lot more money. That one would be that one's up there, sorry. Okay, so the one for the $95,590 would include us hosting the software. So we would have to buy a new server and have the software on our server, and then our IT department would be responsible for downloading updates. And if there was any issues, which is with the system, making sure that that's running smoothly. The other option, which is less upfront, would be to have the service hosted by Cassell, which they then take care of any upgrades themselves, backups, the system itself, it would be hosted by them, like a cloud-based hosting. The difference, not only with the upfront cost, but then the monthly hosted maintenance. So if they host it, we're looking at $2,605 a month for the system. That's after the upfront fees. If we hosted, it's $1,725, which is a difference of $880 a month. So the overall difference is a little over $55,000, whether we pay the larger amount or the smaller amount upfront. When I, I know it sounds like a lot if we have them host it for the $2,605 a month as compared to the $17,250. But the difference is 55, it's gonna be about $60,000 upfront if we were to go ahead and host it ourselves. So with the $880 a month, we're looking at a long time to catch up to that $55,000 that we would pay upfront. So I did talk to our IT guy, and he did say that he would be able to host it, you know, that he would be able to take care of the servers and do all that stuff, and it wouldn't be very costly as far as having IT take care of it. So that would be the plus side of it. The, like I said, the negative side is that we're putting out an additional $55,000 that is really a difference of $880 a month in the support. So like, that's a long time to catch up to make up that difference. So in my opinion, the, having the system hosted and pay the extra $880 a month instead of working out the $55,000 right now is something that I believe would be more cost-effective for the city.
Are you done, Colleen?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll open the floor to counselors. Does any counselors have questions for Colleen? Or Counselor Whitney?
So just the level of support with option one. So it would be the IT support that's the biggest difference?
So option one, you're talking about the larger or the smaller amount?
The smaller, option one, the one.
Yeah, so the difference would be, the difference is that, yeah, we're paying an extra $880 a month for the smaller amount, right? So we would pretty much catch up to that difference amount in five years.
Yeah, that's, that's not what I asked. The the support that staff would have. And so, in our IT department, so with the smaller amount upfront and having Cassell host this for us, it sounds like they would provide more of the IT support and the updates? Is there any other things that would be in that that would be beneficial?
Everything else is exactly the same. We get all of the other benefits. We get the training, we get the, you know, them getting back to us with issues. You know, within, I think they have like a one-hour turnaround time, whereas right now, we're looking, we have a three-day turnaround time. So.
So then the biggest, other than many, the biggest thing would be the IT support, but it sounds like our IT person said that he could do those things? And do we know?
And he said that it wouldn't, it would not even equal the $880 a month difference. He said there's not even close. Like, it might be him coming in quarterly or twice a year, whenever they do updates, or if we have any kind of issue, but with a new server, we shouldn't have any problems at all.
Yeah, so does that $90,000-ish include the new server? What's?
It does not. So he said we can get a new server and have him hook it up and do all of the stuff for under $5,000.
Okay.
Maybe between four and five.
I think something else, counsel, should keep in mind is that we do pay Elver, our IT guy, hourly. So although, you know, we could save the $880 a month, that's the savings with Cassell, but we would have to pay Elver for his time to work on the Cassell stuff. So just keep that in mind when you're doing your calculations.
I mean, I did talk to Elver, and he did say that, you know, if we had the funding to do the $95,000 upfront, that in the long run, yeah, you know, in five years, when we're caught up, we're not. yeah, you know, in five years when we're caught up, we're not gonna, we'll be better off because we'll have everything. And I do not know if we can if we can switch to host it.
I'm gonna call on a couple more counselors for questions. Counselor Sleda?
Yes, that was one of the questions I was gonna ask. I got a couple here was what would we pay an hour for IT?
I think I think it's thirty, thirty-eight or I think it's thirty-eight dollars an hour. It's right, real close to that.
Okay, and the second question, do you know approximately how much time that'll add to him?
Like I said, he said that it shouldn't even be like maybe a couple hours a month unless, and the only, the only time it would be more than an hour or two a month would be is if it's the quarterly updates or if something, you know, goes array with the server, but that could affect anything anyway. So it really doesn't, you know, it's not just Cassell with that issue, so.
And the second question, I want to make sure I understood. Now, we would still get the support if we had any questions or anything, we can still call them, or do we have to call our IT?
No, we would still be able to call them. Yeah, everything is all inclusive once you're in there. It's just a matter of the IT.
What would be the turnaround time on their answers, do you know?
Oh, like if we have issues? Yeah, they said it's an hour.
Hour, okay, that's a lot better than two or three days.
It's amazing difference.
So again, your your advice is is to pay the eight hundred extra a month or not?
You know, in the long run, it would be better to pay the the ninety-five thousand upfront, the hundred thousand upfront. If we can't afford that, I know we have ARPA funds for it. If we have our some other idea for the upper funds, we would at least minimally need to do the hosted service because we cannot continue any longer with our our program that we have. It's just so outdated.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is that everything you had, counselor?
Everything for me.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hooker, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Colleen, just a quick question. If we went with, say, the forty thousand and paid the twenty-six oh five a month, could we then up that later on possibly if the software does everything we want and we find that it's gonna be the best thing?
Well, the only difference would be that we would, at that point, we would have to, if you're looking at the proposals, we would then at at that point pay the fifty-four thousand nine hundred for the software license. And I think that would be, I think that's the difference. And then the server, well, we're gonna need a server anyway, I think, no matter what we do here shortly, but so we would have to then pay the fifty-five thousand dollar difference.
Yes, yeah, the way I'm reading the contract, you know, like two years from now, we decide, yeah, we want to, we want the total software license. We can pay the fifty-four thousand nine hundred at that time.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, and then payment will go down.
Right, right. Okay, and you said that there is ARPA funds that have been designated for that particular thing or can be used?
Can be used. We can use the ARPA funds for this type of infrastructure for the city.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hooker. Mayor Hollitt, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Okay, so I, it sounds like one of the big differences is whether we store this on our own server or their or their server. Is that correct?
Correct.
So and really, that's just information, right? Whether we're we're storing all the information with us or if it's up in the cloud or wherever with them. And the cost difference of that is what?
Are you talking about the full amount?
No, the monthly.
Oh, the monthly, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, so and and I mean, we already have a server right now in City Hall, right? But it needs to be upgraded for other purposes as well. So I I guess what I'm saying is by getting a new server, will that be killing multiple birds with one stone for us? Or no?
No, no. So the the new server kind of needs to happen anyway. Five thousand dollar cost.
Okay.
Basically, with 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 the more expensive option, the additional fifty-four thousand nine hundred, we we we, it's like buying a buying a car outright or leasing it.
Okay.
That's how you look at it. So we could buy the program for fifty-four thousand nine hundred, own it, we'd pay less monthly, and we would eventually start saving money after five years. But again, we could, a year from now, to now whatever, if if we, you know, decide, we could, we can still, they'll still take our money.
If we wanted to upgrade again.
Exactly.
Okay, so the last software program we had, my understanding is we've had it for ten plus years, right? It's not like we're gonna, if we if we jump into this software program, I mean, what?
Oh, no, they won't, he won't be changing it and and.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, and this is the program that the ElCOG recommends most small cities are already using, so it definitely makes sense to go this way. So am I feeling that your guys' recommendation is to go towards the fifty thousand dollar one or the the more expensive one, the ninety?
I mean, if 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 it was approved, I mean, really, I I mean, the the difference is gonna be I mean, if we did it outright and just bought the software license, we're gonna be better off in the long run, really.
Okay.
After five years. So we kind of got a five-year window where we're gonna, you know, either be paying out more at that point or we're gonna be saving more at that point.
Gotcha.
And, you know, during our, you know, we're up here at this conference, this program was brought up several times by people and how great it is and that they're using it. And it's, I mean, it's just really, it's made for small cities and it's made to encompass like so much into one and and make everything flow and work together. And so, yeah, I mean, it was designed for small cities.
Awesome to hear. Okay, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, you are next.
So as a staff perspective, I just had a couple statements and then a question on the two services, because I couldn't remember from the training class that we went to. But as a staff member, so the city of Lowell went through the same process and they chose the same program. And one of the reasons they chose it is because they get so much support from ElCOG as we do. ElCOG uses it too, and it it's easier to get that support back and forth using the same software. And two, it'll be so much nicer for our staff members because there will be a savings too in time, because I won't have to bother Colleen and Leah all the time. I will be able to go on to it myself and extract the data that I need, especially for financial stuff. And I won't have to go through Colleen and Leah anymore and take their time away from what they're doing, which I took time away from Leah today just for the same thing. And so for for the other department heads to be able to go in, one of the places I used to work, we could go in and get all of our stuff and not have to bother the finance people. And it was real time and I could go look at my budget anytime I wanted. And the program we have now just does not do that. And then the question I had on the two different services, or if they host it, or if we if we buy the software, do we have a backup? Whereas if they have it, we always have a backup, because I'll tell you a PD story during all this this summer, we, one of our servers fried and we lost all of our case report stuff. We have the paper copies, but we, the program died and Elver cannot get it back. And so that's just something to think about, having our own servers. If the building burnt down in the middle of the night, we're still gonna have to have some kind of backup system. So that was just something, and I don't remember calling if if we have it, if there's a backup, but if they have it, there is a backup.
Elver will be doing a backup off of this so that it's, yeah, constantly being kept backed up. Cassell does have their own, there's this gonna, there's a web base.
Okay, so so there's two backups. Yes, Cassell has a backup in the cloud. Elver has already installed hard device backups on our current server.
And do we still have the cloud part regardless of which way we go?
So how I believe it it works is like anything, let's say that we back up once a week and something happens, we could go back to wherever we started from before that backup was done. So like if we backed up a week before, we'd have to go back and do all that work for that week, but it would still be at least to there.
Counselor Whitney's next.
Okay, so I have a couple things. So to piggyback off what Kevin was saying, so was the backup done on a disk? Is it done kind of in the cloud through a web-based program? How is the backup done?
I think, right, because I think we have the little.
Yeah, both, both. There's a there's a hardware physical device backup with our servers now. And then there's cloud backup provided by Cassell.
And the cloud backup will happen regardless as to what program we use or choose?
To a certain point, yes.
What do you mean by to a certain point?
Well, oh, well, I guess, no, you're talking about the cloud. Yes, so that should still be, well, no, 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 because we're not, they're not serving it. So if we're not having them post it, we are responsible for the backup.
All backup, okay. And so then my other question is, you know how different softwares have versions? So if you look at WordPerfect, you have all these different versions, and anytime a new version comes out, you have to go and you have to buy that new version. So how will that work with Cassell? Do they like have regular versions of Cassell? So?
All of those are included in our monthly fee.
Either way.
So either way, we get whatever versions they have. So if we do the ninety thousand dollar option, in in three years from now, they have a new version, it's gonna automatically come to us as part of the updates then?
Correct, but then our IT would be responsible for coming in and updating all that.
Okay, yeah, and I know ElCOG's IT does that regularly because that's what I'm under. So I know their IT is very familiar and can can do it very well, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what the monthly software fee is, is for all the updates, any new stuff that comes out, stuff like that, new versions.
And then my, and I have one more question, sorry. Budget-wise, how are we looking? So if we wanted to do the larger amount upfront, how are we looking budget-wise in being able to to make that purchase and make that happen?
Well, that's where I, that's where we would have to use the ARPA funds that are left over.
So but we do have ARPA funds to be able to do that for sure?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe we ended up with a hundred and something, like a hundred and ten. Do you remember, Don?
I'm not off in my head, but you're talking about leftover from last year plus we still have this year.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, we have plenty.
Yeah.
Okay, is that everything, Counselor Whitney?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I just have a couple of questions. But I think Counselor Whitney just took one of them, was how would it be paid for? So my only question then is on the licenses. I noticed that the contract says we would be buying three. So then this, are we able to have everyone, like all the chief, all the department heads and all the staff work with just the three licenses with that software on their computers?
Okay, correct. So that was one of the other differences. So if we have the software license, we can have what's that, three concurrent and two additional. So we have five, yes.
That's the same number.
Yeah, that's the same. So these, the, you see the three concurrent and the two additional concurrent, that that is the actual like it would finance staff. So it would be myself, Leah and Jackie who, and Wendy for the for the court stuff. So we have those four, plus we did an additional one just in case James is needing to get in there and do something or whatever. Now, then on top of that, we ha- I forget, I I don't even know that there's a number that it maxes out at. They have like to where chief can get in or public works manager, and they have a cloud-based application that they log into, that then they can go in and pull reports and all that stuff. So that's included with it. So we have like the hard users to where we're actually in like the program program, and then they have access to all the other stuff at any time.
And I think I remember from the training on that is I can go look, but I can't change anything. So.
Yeah.
Go look in our licenses or whatever, this is a little different, but only the people that have the licenses can change anything.
Right, and then wait, I just thought if I had one other question was oh, it was on the training. I I remember seeing somewhere it said the training would be held at Cassell. Does that mean that all of our staff would need to be traveling to go wherever they live?
So they said that they have a few different options. So they would at least like them at least one or two main people that do the most and they're to, it's in Utah. So the trainees included, we would have to pay for the airfare and hotel. But they did say that they do have quite a bit, they could kind of mesh it up to where part of it will be online, and then part of it would be us going there. They said that they can come to us, but it gets very expensive then.
Okay.
We would, we would go out to Utah for, you know, two or three days and we would get, go through their whole training course.
Okay, but do they have good food in Utah?
It's been good here.
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions. And just for the record, I am leaning towards the the larger upfront now, I think. First of all, I feel like the savings after five years is worth it in addition to the lower amount ongoing. And oh, and I would also recommend, I mean, I worked in hospitals for thirty years, I would recommend daily backups no matter what, and also storing it off-site.
I believe that next Elver has something that is remotely backing up nightly at eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night, because before, somebody had it set up to back up at four forty-five every day and all of our computers would go boom. So I asked them to change the time. So it is doing some kind of nightly backup.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I did see other counselors had pulled their hands up, but I'm not sure, maybe those got answered when we, after we all had it. Okay, well, I did see other counselors had pulled their hands up, but I'm not sure maybe those got answered when we after we all had a turn. Audi, do you have any more questions? You oh, you're good. Okay, good. Uh, well, then do we have anyone interested in making a motion?
Um, I can try.
Counselor Whitney, go ahead.
Um. Sorry. Um, I moved to allow the finance director to accept. The one time software license training setup and conversion um to be hosted. By or from Cassel. Hold on. Yeah.
Are you referring to the upfront ninety five?
Yes, the the one time. Software license that is the.
Okay.
Also. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Um, counselors, do we have any more discussion?
Um, I I would just like to say that I think um. You know, right now we know we have a little bit of extra funds because of ARPA. And moving forward, you know, we know the years coming are gonna be leaner and a little more tough. So um creating. A less burden for in the future. I think is is um. The smarter thing to do at this point. That is one of the biggest reasons why. I support the the ninety thousand dollar purchase at this time.
I agree. Go ahead, Mayor. Sorry.
Go ahead, Melissa. Sorry, I can't figure out how to get my hand up and I usually have no problem. I don't know where it went. Um.
Oh.
I just wanted to clarify that Counselor Whitney's motion was for the. From about the savings after five years, correct?
Uh, you're cutting out, I believe, to clarify, she's motioning for the ninety five thousand dollar upfront. With the lower monthly payments.
Okay, thank you. I do agree with this as well.
Thank you. Mayor Hallid, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to agree with um Counselor Whitney that um I absolutely agree with that and also I think this is a really long time coming.
Thank you, Counselor Sledoff. Did you have anything to add?
No, uh, that got answered. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think we might be ready to call for a vote. Jackie. Counselor Coker.
Hi, sorry.
Mayor Hollis.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Bjarnson.
Hi.
Counselor Canyon.
Hi.
Counselor Sledoff.
All right.
Uh, that's that motion passes.
Do you know when this will start?
Okay, so thank you. And this is this is a long time needed coming in. Um. This is just been uh. It's been rough working in this current system, so this will be really, really helpful to the city and all of it. So they said that it can take it's, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so it's gonna take between six. And nine months.
Oh.
Yeah. It's a long process because of um. Having to make sure everything is moved correctly and they'll do it in little chunks, like they're gonna move. This part of the program over and then they'll move and make sure all the bugs are worked out, all that's working correctly. And then once that's working correctly, then they'll move another little chunk. Make sure everything's running. So it's 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 very like they make sure that nothing's left behind and that it's all in there and it's working and done correctly.
Okay. I just uh, I just thought it's something I'd actually like to add a new motion. Um, uh, to authorize our finance director to go ahead and uh. Research and. Purchase a new server that will accommodate this system. Because obviously we're gonna need that with. The way that we're going. Do I hear?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, counselor or mayor Hollis second. Any discussion? Okay, Jackie, can you call for a vote? Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Bjarnson.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Canyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Sledoff.
Hi.
Mayor Hollis.
Hi.
Okay, and then while I was talking, Counselor Sledoff, I saw your hand come up. Do you have something else?
No, it got answered. Oh, I there is one thing. How quick will we be able to send? And how many people do we need to send? Three?
Our training, are you talking about?
Yeah, for the training.
Um, I will not know yet until um. I start talking to them that it, you know, because I think they have training during certain times and stuff like that, so. We didn't get quite that far um since they didn't have an approval, so. We will know. I'll um definitely keep keep you updated on what's going on with the process.
So we're gonna plan on sending three people then?
Um. Max, yes.
Okay. Now, beans are beans are way like that. Do we pay? An eight hour section for them or their pay or do we? Pay them every all the time they're gone?
It will be work, so it'll be the eight hour days.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, counselor. Um. And thank you, Colleen, for all of your work and input to that. Getting that system incorporated into the city hall.
Yeah.
Uh, I see our next item is nine point three updates on D E Q. T M D L and H and A projects and contract with West Oak. G I F and Planning LLC. James, is that something that you are gonna introduce or okay? Um, before. Uh, sorry, real quick, before you do, I see by uh, Counselor Whitney's hand is raised. Uh, go ahead.
I just um want to. Was I was kind of wishy washy on whether to do a potential conflict or national conflict for this. And I'm deciding to do an actual conflict of interest for this one and not discuss it um because my brother. Uh, completed some of these projects and he was paid for doing that work through the city, so I will not participate in this discussion.
Thank you. So we have a declaration of a natural conflict. Counselor Whitney. For the record, and so go ahead, James.
Okay, um, yeah, item nine point three uh basically was just as promised, keep council updated on the. Contract work uh Rick Zilstra has done for us. Uh. I think the last time we left it, it would, you know, he completed the first D E Q project, which was done satisfactorily. Uh, same thing with the second project. It's also a D E Q uh project that had to do with mercury in the water. Um, I attached the memo that he wrote explaining uh the project. And uh, this was accepted again by D E Q. It's exceptional work. Once again. Um. And then some of the additional uh. Projects he worked, he's worked on a little bit, some information. Uh, there's another memo. Regarding the T G M Code Assistance Grant. And the Housing Needs Analysis Grant uh work that he's done. For us on those projects as well. And attached his uh. Uh, latest invoice. For fourteen hundred dollars. We're expecting uh. One more invoice for these projects. Which uh. Probably be around the same i- if not, uh, actually it'll be a little bit less, I think, probably around a thousand.
To complete uh what the original contract was for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have a packet in front of me, so I don't know if there's any recommended motions on this or. Is this just a discussion topic?
It's basically just just for information, because as council member, I I promise we uh. Keep counsel abreast of of his work. Show the actual work product and include the uh invoices.
Okay, thank you. I do wanna quickly ask if anyone on council has any questions for uh West Oak.
Uh.
Yeah, uh, I am in the room. If there's any questions, um, James explained it very well. Um, but if there's any questions, I was here or if anybody in the room would like a little more um. Have an explanation on what we're doing, I'd be happy to do that as well. Um, so basically I'm here to field questions and not. Um, create a presentation, but I could probably try to put one together. I'll tell my head if I need to. So with that, uh, ask. Anyone has any questions or clarification?
Yeah. Counsel online, I don't see any hands. I know I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask.
Great.
Um, yes, yes, please. I noticed in the middle of all the information that we got, there was something called, it was dated nine fourteen twenty-two. A T G M Code Project Letter.
Hmm.
And it was for S O W, whatever that stands for.
Statement of work.
Thank you, statement of work. Um, in paragraph two, it said that. Basically, I'm just summarizing because I don't have a document with me that. Whatever was being discussed there was for the duration of the West Oak contract.
Correct.
I'm assuming the current contract that we're all talking about right now.
Correct, and the West Oak contract will expire before that project ends.
Okay, so that's what I was gonna say is that on. Paragraph three, it kind of says that this is. An extension of the current contract, and so I wanted you to explain like.
Correct, so.
We need a new contract?
No, so that. There's um, the the original contract was for West Oak to do um a number of different items.
Uh.
But at the time we write the contract, we weren't a hundred percent sure what those items will be. So in the uh first original contract, it refers to. Uh, statements of work. So anything that has a statement of work is attached to that contract.
Okay.
So what that does basically leaves the door open for I, could you do this or could you? Um, that was one of the best ways without knowing if um we were gonna do the housing analysis or if there's a G I S work coming up. That prevents us from having that for um redo the original contract. So anything with a statement of work is in addition to. To the original. So the original points to the statement of work, if that makes sense.
Kind of. I'm just wondering, uh, question for James then, would we need to? Extend the contract or consider renewing or getting a new contract? When this one technically expires so that we can continue the ongoing?
Well, that would depend uh based on the next agenda item.
Right.
If. If we don't. Get a city planner, community services director, then some of this work would then have to go to LCOG. Uh, at the hundred and thirty dollars an hour rate.
But why would it have to go to LCOG? Why wouldn't we be able to just continue? Con- contracting West Oak to finish work?
If I may.
And and Rick would like to interject here.
Um, I think the reason why the the West Oak contract ends at the time it does is because of the elections and how the. The principal of West Oak contract is running for city council. And that could cause conflict of interest. So I think it was left open for that potential if in the event of. Becoming city councillor, it would clear up any potential conflicts. So. So I mean.
Yeah, it makes sense to me, but I'm wondering, James has a question mark on his face.
No, no, uh, sorry, I just have bad facial expression, maybe. Uh, yeah, no, that was, that's why when we wrote the original contract, we had a. A hard drop dead day. So that um he. Mister Zilstra would not be uh contracted employee with the city during the uh election.
Right. Okay, um. So and then I noticed in the document, there was. This is the T G M part. Uh, or maybe, maybe it's all the T G M, but. There was a lot of dates for community meetings and um. Informational things that are gonna be needing to happen. Are um. I noticed some of the dates have already passed and we have, and we're not there yet, so I'm assuming that's all the delay based on the fire.
Um, I'm referring to the the document that looks like this with all the with, yes. So this is the uh public involvement plan is what this is. And um it's kind of a a living document at this point. So some of these things have happened, the dates have passed. Um, those things have occurred. For example, um. Uh, the T G M individual came to there, came to the planning commission and and gave a presentation. So those aspects of it have have already occurred. So this um. Is a plan for the entire, this was originally written prior to the starting of it. Were just um, they asked us to clean up the document, they asked us for the more uh finite details. Um, the alignment of organ planning um in nature, and that's what we did here. Was um made the plan.
Lot of edits.
Right, exactly. It was a lot of edits. Um. But the original plan and the original document did start before those meetings happened and before those dates happened. So um. So the living, so the document did start prior, but the edits are still ongoing, if that if that helps.
I guess my um only reason for bringing that up was because I saw. A September twenty twenty-two date for a community meeting. And I don't recall that we had any.
No, and I'm not, that's because of, but yeah.
So this is why that part of it is.
Right, right.
Pushed out.
And again, it's just, it's still just a draft. And um. Document, that's why you see all the comments and all the the edits. Uh, but nonetheless, it is one of my work products I've been working on, and I think that's why you're seeing it is because it's a work product.
Uh huh.
Not a finished product, if that if that helps.
Okay.
So this isn't, yeah.
Okay, now I see Counselor Sledoff has a question. Go ahead, counselor.
Okay. Have we met all the dates required? So it'll bring us up and not late and being fine?
With the, are you referring to D E Q projects? If that, if you refer to the D E Q projects, we have better deadlines, yes.
Okay. And are there any deadlines on this other?
No, the southern ones got a lot of more soft deadlines. They're not as, they're not as rigid as D E Q.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, does that about wrap up everything you had to share with us at this time, James?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and did you have anything else you wanted to add, Rick?
Um, no, that was just here for to answer questions and that's basically it, so.
Excellent, well, thank you. Okay, so that brings us up to nine point four, Community Services Director. Slash City Planner Hiring. James, go ahead. Oh, I have a real quick. Counselor Whitney.
So um, I'm just gonna claim a potential conflict of interest for this one. Because I know that my brother Rick has an interest in applying if this position is posted. So and it would be if it's posted, it's to everybody, so that's why I'm only doing a potential.
Okay, makes sense. All right, go ahead, James.
All right, thank you, counselor. All right, so hopefully everyone read my memo for agenda item nine point four. Rick Zilstra was, was laid off from the city on May twenty ninth, twenty twenty, and since then, we've been without a community services director. Planner, technically assistant planner at that time. And after that happened, I did a couple of things. One, it pushed a lot more work. Onto Public Works, Robert Christman specifically, a lot of the admin stuff that. Rick had been doing, got placed on to Robert, so he was in the field less, pushed a lot of work onto the city administrator as well. And then all the planning work then went to L cog. Whereas, you know, we discussed in a prior meeting, we, you know, we now pay a hundred and thirty dollars an hour for that work. And I, and also some projects have, have been also. Assigned to our other contractor, Northwest Code Professionals. And so I, I did the, well, calling Dick, thank you, did the numbers for. Twenty twenty, twenty one. And our current year so far, for how much we have been paying L cog and Northwest Code Associates. And you'll notice that, so in twenty twenty. You know, Rick worked roughly half a year. Second half of the year, we didn't have one. Didn't have his position and, and we paid. In just six months, over forty five thousand dollars to L cog and Northwest Code Associates for their work. In twenty twenty one, we spent a total of fifty three thousand, four hundred and change. And then for the first eight months of this year, eight and a half. Because that's, we only have the billing for first eight and a half months, we've so far paid almost forty thousand. I anticipate that to be. Well over fifty thousand by the end of the year, just, just using extrapolating. In fact, I think it'll actually be higher because we pushed a lot more projects. Onto them, so it'll probably be closer to sixty thousand that we'll have to pay for this year. So, so that's, those are just the numbers to look at. Again, you know, that doesn't include the extra. Work that's been put on other, other folks. But I think. Even more importantly. Pretty much every day, there, there's some question that comes in that, that could be answered by. A city planner. Back today, I got an email from a developer who wants to build an apartment complex in town, and he asked me, can you put me in touch with your city planner? I tried to find him on the website and. Couldn't see a contact information. So I had to explain, but we don't have one right now. But. We might soon. But it's, a lot of times little issues, people just calling and. You know, I, I took property law, I took real estate, real estate law, but it's not something I practiced in, so I'm, I'm learning as fast as I can, but it's. I am not a, a city planner, and going to law school does not make you a planner. You have to go to specialized school like Rick did for this. So there's, there's just, there's a lot of projects. Also that we have not been able to do. Such as working on developing the area known as Little Texas. Where we could be selling. City owned land and developing it, building houses, et cetera. That, that is a project we could. Pushed L cog, but it'll cost tens of thousands of dollars to do so. Same thing with the O I P. Same issue there. And then, of course, these, these. The two grant projects, the housing needs analysis. And. The code project that councillor Kenyon was just talking about. We have ongoing obligations under those projects. That will require some. Planning work input. And then, of course, the D E Q requirements are annual as well. The, the mercury stuff and the annual water quality reports, et cetera, all of it has to be done. By somebody. I, I've just personally been impressed with. Mr. Zilstra's work product. And his institutional knowledge, I mean, he's. Been here forever, it was a city, he tends to have the answer, at least he hasn't been stumped yet. So my, my. Initial ask was going to be to. Hire him direct, rehire him directly, because he was laid off, therefore he's eligible to be directly rehired. However, since two years has passed. I contacted our city attorney and he said that. It's kind of dubious, we, we may be able to do that, it's, it's a maybe for a direct hire. Because at the time he was laid off. In his letter, it was supposed to specify how long he could be rehired, but it wasn't. So that leaves it in the gray area, and then approximately two months after he was laid off. New policy was developed for the city that says. Rehires from a layoff can only occur for up to one year. Now, that policy was not in place at the time Mr. Zilstra. Was laid off, so one could argue. We could do the direct rehire, but. To be safe. I think it would be best. To post the job. And. You know, to be fair, there, there, there may be someone. You know, better than Mr. Zilstra, I personally. Don't, can't see that, but it, it, it's possible, and obviously, we would be fair if we do get additional applicants, then we'd go through interview processes, et cetera. But my plan would be to, to, to post it, you know, we need someone immediately, so it would be. Fast track, probably only take a couple of weeks. Again, that's, that's assuming someone doesn't come out of the woodwork that has the same set of skills. And experience, institutional knowledge. That Rick has, but, but again, if they are, if someone does, then we'll go through the lengthier process. Just want to make sure that we do everything legally and above board, so. That's my strong recommendation. The funding for this position, I'm suggesting that we start off around. Step three, which is sixty five thousand, nine hundred and twenty a year. Which is frankly not very competitive. Compared to others, it's, well, it's like the rest of our positions, they'll probably be the lowest paid planner in, in the state, but he's okay with that. Anyway, that's, that's what the cost would be, but again, when you look at that cost, you need to factor in that we're, we wouldn't be paying L cog. Much at all. If anything, because when you're a member of L cog, you get a certain number of hours that you can use them for free, it's part of the original contracts, if we run into something that. Can't answer. That can go to L cog, and that's part of our, we already, we already pay for that anyway with our membership. So that's, that's. That's my ask, and it's strongly recommended, and it would be set up same way it was when. He was working before, where two thirds of the cost come from those public work funds. That we normally can't touch. Because the, the, a lot of the work that he does is directly related to streets. Water. D E Q stuff. So it is, it is. Fine to use that funding for his position. Like we did before. Because he would, he would become the, the director of Public Works as the community services director, so. We have that funding already in those accounts. But I just, I really can't stress. I, you know, at this conference we're at now, I talk to folks and again, they, we're talking about ideas, grants, et cetera, and. I keep saying, oh yeah, you need to involve your planner in this, blah, 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 and I keep saying, why don't we don't really have one right now? And. Yeah, it's just, it's hard to develop. And move forward as a city. Without someone with this knowledge. And I, it's, yeah, you can contract it out, the L cog at a hundred and thirty dollars an hour, but they don't have the institutional knowledge. That Rick does, I mean, so one project hadn't even considered the. Little Texas. And that, that's huge, so. Something, something to think at, think about, so, so I included documents here. Begin the numbers from, from budgets. How much we're paying L cog, et cetera, his resignation letter there. And I've had the old job description, and then I've created. A new job description, which is basically ready to be posted as soon as. There's a go ahead from council, so. I think that's all I have, and ready for any questions.
I don't have a question, I have a statement. So based on. Our city administrator's presentation, I think I could change this to an actual conflict of interest, it just feels like it would be a smarter decision.
Thank you for updating that. Looks like Jackie's adding that to the record. Um, again, I have no documentation in front of me, do we have a recommended motion on this topic? Or is this for discussion tonight?
There, there is a recommended motion. At the bottom of my memo. Which would be. Do you want me to read it out loud, or?
No, I just saw it, so. I'll ask it this time, does anybody, would anybody like to make a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead councillor Shledoff.
I move to allow the city administrator to start the hiring process for a community service director. Slash city planner immediately. And.
I'll second that. Councillor Shledoff, did you want to add something to that motion? I heard you say and, and.
No, I'll get it during. The next step.
Okay, so it's been moved by councillor Shledoff and seconded by councillor Hooker. I'll open the floor for discussion, and it looks like Mayor Hollit.
Thank you. I absolutely concur with everything James stated, and I just wanted to say. Just to add a little bit to my time being mayor for the last year, I have been. In multiple meetings where not having a planner has really been, just as James has say, was explaining. It's really been one of the downfalls of making progress, and especially, it's come up many times with the Housing Needs Assessment Program. And I really truly believe that in the near future, it's just going to keep on piling up and be. It's going to really prevent Oak Ridge from being able to make the next steps, you know, one of them. Just a small one of them was, we had somebody. That wants to put in a duplex, and I was talking about that, and Rick happened to be in the room, and he explained to us that our. That our codes don't actually allow multi-housing units like that, so. That's just one small little area that, one of the reasons why builders don't buy lots, because they can't do. Duplex and triplexes, it's also one of the reasons why we can't. Entice, oh, there was the Homes for Good, I met with one of them and talked to them as well, and they had some of the same reasons. And all of that will come out in the Housing Needs Assessment, but I think it's all going to boil back to having a city planner. It's going to be a really big deal in that and moving forward, so I fully support James in this, and yeah, thank you.
Okay, next is councillor Shledoff.
Yes. I wanted to find out now. A, a new planner. Will part of the money out of the O I P go toward his wages?
That was a question.
Yeah, I will, because that's part of the planner's job will be to get those properties reassessed, figure out. What we want to do with that, and assist with. Getting those sold, developed, planned, et cetera, so yes, O I P money.
Do you know? Do you know approximately how much percentage?
I could take a look back at the old budget off the top of my head, I, if I recall, it was around ten thousand. That might be off by a little bit, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so to, to kind of add on to that, I want to actually clarify. James, with. Councillor Shledoff's. Question there, are you referring to the administrative overhead that is assigned to the industrial park? Already in our budget, and so part of that would be to cover the planning. My reason for that question is because we actually have a planning. Department, or if you want to call it that, or plannings. Our budget in, in. General fund, we have a section for a planning. It's a page in our budget.
Correct, and that's where we pay L cog and Northwest professional, yeah.
Right, and we also have administrative overhead in that fund, which. You know, covers the administrative costs. But we also have administrative overhead in the industrial park fund. Which would go into. The general fund. So is that what you're referring to when you answered his question?
No, I'm sorry, I was referring back to our old. Twenty twenty, twenty one budget. That, that still had Rick's position in there, and it outlined where all his money came from. That's why I'm, that's why I was trying to explain it. We set it up the same way as we did when he, when he was here before, where roughly two thirds. Of the funding for that position would come from. Proprietary funds from Public Works, and then. A, a little bit also came from the O I P fund, which again, normally couldn't, you couldn't touch, except for O I P stuff, but it is O I P stuff, because he would be developing that. That's the point there. Maybe I'm not making sense, but in my head, I make sense.
Well, I, I would ask if that's true, what, what line in the industrial park fund? Or in the pub, uh, public works funds shows a transfer going. From those funds to administration for his position, his old position?
You mean our current budget?
No, the one you just referred to, the twenty twenty.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, I, Rick just sent that to me earlier today, I think I emailed it to myself for, for. So I could easily find it.
And while he's looking, I would just like to, to say that. Working in the city hall and being up front there and hearing the people that come in, and there is a lot of frustration. With people trying to do projects and homes and building and stuff with the time that it takes, because we're like the middle man in this right now. So we're having to collect their information, and then we give it to this person, and then we're waiting on L cog, and we're not their only person, but they're, you know, their only. City that they're dealing with, they got multiple pots, so we're not like, you know, in any hurry, like, we're not. Getting stuff done quicker, or it's, it's just frustrating for. I hear a lot of frustration from people about the amount of time and that coming in and not being able to even get an answer right then and there. Like, where are we on this? Why is this taking so long? And then it's, well, I will have to reach out to them, and then I will get back to you, so we're, we're more or less a middle man. Working with these L cog and Northwest Code, so it would be even more helpful for our friends and the people. And that have that direct contact with somebody.
Yeah, and these, these developers, they, they think and act quickly, and if you can't answer them right away, they're not interested, they move on to somewhere else. Because they could build anywhere. Because they could build anywhere, you know, there's a shortage of, of builders. And developers in the state, so. It's kind of like, if you can't answer them right away, then they're, they're, they're done. I did find the, the items from the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget. So at that time, uh. Twenty two thousand seven hundred fifty five came out of the general fund specifically. Uh, six thousand one hundred and fifty from admin, nine thousand two hundred twenty five from planning. Six hundred and fifteen dollars from police. Four thousand.
Administrative overhead right now?
Uh, y- yes, yeah.
Okay, I, I was asking for, um, you had said that in the old budget. There was money being taken from. Or I think this is what you said. From the industrial park and from public works. To help pay for the position that he previously held.
Yes.
That's the money I'm looking for.
That's exactly what this is.
Yeah, so, um, so for, from public works and other proprietary funds. Uh, there was seven thousand three hundred eighty from streets. Uh, uh, three thousand six hundred ninety from the OIP, sorry, I was off from that number. Uh, but then three thousand six hundred ninety dollars from wood. I, I, what's wood? It's a proprietary fund.
It's a wood stove fund that doesn't exist.
Got it.
Gotcha, uh, one thousand eight hundred forty five dollars from bike. Okay, sure, seven thousand three hundred eighty from water. Uh, seven thousand three hundred eighty, eighty from wastewater, seven thousand three hundred eighty dollars from stormwater.
Thank you. I'm, I'm actually aware of every single number you're reading off right now, and what I've been told for the last fifteen years. Is that all of those numbers. Are numbers of money that goes from those departments into the general fund to cover administration, which is. Pay, uh, doing their payroll, uh, paying for insurance on all the equipment, doing. Human resources or et cetera, et cetera. I have never heard that it was to cover the position. That was currently being filled for a community.
That is, that's what the administrative overhead is, that's, that's the, um. Not the administrative overhead, I think we're wording this incorrectly, Dawn, I think that's where we're confusing you. We're, this is where we're paying him out of, it's not the administrative overhead. So I think that's why we're confusing you. So, yes, you're right there, it's not administrative overhead, it is, is overhead. The, 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 the planning. Position, that's where it's all being paid for. And charged to.
Two, two thirds of it, roughly, yeah.
Okay. Uh, councillor Sledoff?
Okay. Now, uh, with this new position that would take all the. Stuff away from admin, uh, in there now that they're doing now. And it would go strictly through the city planner, right?
It would alleviate a little bit of extra work that had been put on. Our, our assistant planner, correct?
Yeah, and, and alleviate, uh, a lot of the, almost all of the admin work for, uh, public works. Robert Christman, so. Chris would be out in the field doing, getting his hands dirty.
Yeah.
Rather than in the office, and, and by the way, it's in my memo, but, uh, Robert Christman, uh, strongly and fully supports, uh, this idea.
Okay, one other question, uh, where would his office be?
I think he would have, he would have two offices, one, one in city hall and one, uh. At public works building as well.
Okay, I didn't know we had another office down there.
Everything councillor Sledoff?
Pardon?
Is that, is that all the questions from you?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we had enough office space for another person. Thank you.
Or he actually used to work, I believe. It's, it's vacant now.
Thank you, Kevin Martin, go ahead.
I'd just like to add thing that kind of curtails on something that James said. Is my time is pro tan, the amount of time I spent on planning stuff, and let me clarify, Colleen shaking her head because she knows. Uh, I had no idea what I was doing with planning, but just the time I spent trying, it's on back and forth between Jackie. Uh, El Cog and the people that were asking questions or the people that have projects going and then planning commission. It took up a lot of time for the city administrator position. To deal with that, where I leave if that this position came back. It would streamline that and help with the city's economic development and just all kinds of stuff where. Ha- having a, a city administrator that's not a planner, you, you don't have that because you have to go to other people or just the amount of time it takes just to get. That James could probably say between emails and phone calls and getting stuff back and forth. Between three or four different people and being able to streamline, I think it'd be, it's a good idea as far as me as a staff, which is my opinion.
Thank you, chief. Okay, um, I have an additional comment I just thought of is that I would like, um. If, if this. Gets implemented, I'd like to see a supplemental budget that would show. A, uh, reduction of expenses in the planning. Department that's currently budgeted probably from the contingency lines or whatever. And then, uh, addition of a line. You know, for personnel for a planner, so that all that would need to be done through. A supplemental budget so that our budget is accurate. For this current year.
Yeah, you're, you're right councillor, and, and that, and that was already on, on our radar, and we have to already do a supplemental budget anyway, so that, that changes will definitely be made.
Uh huh. Okay, is, is that everything everybody had?
I have, I just have one question, so would this position now be the new department head of public works?
Yes, yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it just brought up another question for me, then would we still have an assistant planner in the planning department in the budget? Was we. I mean, not in a planning department, it's in administration.
Yeah, I was curious about that too. Would the planning roles then go to the new position?
Y- yes, it would, um, which would then give, um. That position more time to do other things that we really, really. Are need her to be doing other than trying to. Be the in, main person in this, so it would really alleviate a lot of frustration and, and help us to, to. You know, be a lot more on track with other things that are, that this is interfering with right now, so, yeah.
Was that everything you had, Mayor Hollit?
Yes, it was.
Thank you, councillor Sledoff. You're muted.
Now, this new planning position, would that? Then lift the. The, of our. Of Robert being the lead out there, I mean, the manager of that department or? Does that switch the planning?
So, so Robert has nev- he, he's never been the. Uh, he's the, he's the, he's the supervisor of the department.
Okay.
That, that wouldn't change.
Okay, so the new position wouldn't take over that too?
Uh, correct, like, so Robert as the su- supervisor, he supervises the other employees, tells them what to do, sets their schedule. You know, assigns however many guys to do, to do project X, project Y, that, that will still stay the same. Um, it's just, uh, the. Community services directors would be in charge of all the admin stuff. So all the DEQ reports, the water quality reports, those annual requirements, um. He would take over, uh, that stuff, which I can speak for Robert, uh, he does not like doing that stuff, it's, you know, out of his. Out of his wheelhouse, you know, he, he could fix the whole plan, but. Sending in the, in the reports, not his, uh, cup of tea.
Okay, so this position would not be his supervisor, that would come down on you, right?
Well, I, yeah, I'm, I'm the supervisor for all of the departments.
Right. So.
But yes, this, this position would be Robert's new supervisor.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out, be Robert's new supervisor. Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, does that conclude discussion? Jackie, can you cough our bell? Councillor Cooper? You're muted councillor.
Hi.
Councillor Sledoff?
Hi.
Councillor Hooker?
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon?
Hi.
Mayor Hollit?
Hi.
Councillor Bjornson?
Hi.
Okay. That motion passes. Um. The next item on our agenda is item number nine point five. Choosing a new date for the public safety be community forum. James, do you have anything on that you wanted to share?
Uh, just to let council know, uh, yeah, that fire really put a damper on, you know, planning. Uh, for the forum and then, of course, advertising, people were paying more attention to saving, potentially saving their own lives and. So we need to set a new date. Uh, I contacted Reed and Old School to make sure dates were available. And I have a list, uh, on the, uh, agenda bill. I can read them off just to let everybody know, uh, avail, and they're all Saturdays, because I assume we want to do Saturday. October twenty ninth, November fifth. November twenty sixth. Which is two days after Thanksgiving, when I, as I noted. December third, December seventeenth, January seventh. I also noted that election day is, uh, November eighth. If, if council wants to take that into consideration. Which, which may or may not be a, uh, consideration for council. You know, obviously, one argument is, it might be nice to, to know who the. New councillors are going to be at the forum so that the public can be talking. Directly, I know they don't take office till January, but they would. Still be able to reach those people. So tho- those are the available dates at the school for Saturdays, and it's up to council to pick, uh. A new date and, and hopefully also maybe pick some dates for some pre-planning meetings.
Okay, um. I'll open this for discussion and I see councillor Whitney's hand up.
Yeah, so, um, there's two holidays in November.
Oh.
So that, um, I don't know what kind of. Issues that would create with people.
What, what are the holidays besides Thanksgiving?
I don't know, but I just know there is because I have a day off.
Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Oh, that's.
Like I knew, just can't remember it, um, well, I feel like moving into December might be a little easier with holidays. And that sort of thing, because, um, you know, Christmas is later in the month of December. I feel like October twenty ninth is just. It's really soon and we have a lot of data to pull together.
Well, I've already completed all the data work that was assigned to me, so that's ready to go, just so everyone knows.
We were going to do that together, so I'd like to see what you have.
Because I'd be happy to, I just went through all the websites for all the cities that were mentioned. And gathered all the data that came up in that, in the questions in that meeting.
Okay, because they're remorse, so I, yeah.
Red sheet.
Yeah, I thought it would be, um, a good idea to include all the other cities that have. Public safety fees.
I actually also dug for more.
Okay.
And found, um, additional, there's not fifty, but there's additional.
Yeah, so I, I just, um. So like, the twenty ninth is really coming up fast. And quick, um. And I, I, I feel like it would be good for people to be able to focus on the election. And that sort of thing first, so.
Councillor Hooker?
Yeah, I. I agree to a certain extent with Bobby, um, the twenty ninth of October is coming up fast, however. My opinion, which, um, sometimes I don't give. To me, it would be good, we have shoved this down the road so many times and not been able to have the meetings or discuss it and do all of that. I personally think we need to get a town hall meeting, have it. And answer the questions prior to the election, if we have to have a public safety fee. They need to know that and they need to know that we all are in agreement. I just, I really believe that we need to get this on the calendar and have it. So I'm, I'm more than happy for October twenty ninth.
I agree with Jan.
I agree with that, well.
Yes, my question is then that, um, if, if we don't have, are we going to have meetings up until then to? Go over it or? I guess for myself, I want to be prepared for anything that comes my way, um, I'm, I'm not really up for just. Being thrown out there, not knowing, um, you know, having all the questions, so.
No, and I agree with you, Colleen, you do need, I mean, you're going to be one of the biggest. The biggest things for the meeting, because you'll have to have the figures and all of that, so. Just.
And I think that, and, and I think that it's really, really important and that we really. Wh- whenever it's going to be, we really push it out there and let people know and give them. That opportunity to be able to come and ask questions and know what's going on, uh, so, you know, I, I. Make sure that it's very known that this is going to happen, it's really.
I, I, I a hundred percent agree, and I think it's the responsibility of the council, every councillor. To tell everybody they know once this is set, that it's going to be that way. This is when it is, this is where it is, if you have questions, get them in.
Agree.
I think we probably need to establish. A line of communication for the community to be able to submit questions. Either, well, actually, multiple ways, through our website. Or through the front desk at city hall ahead of time to submit questions.
Dawn, last time we did the town hall, we did a survey monkey and I think we came up with questions and then you developed it and gave the link to. The CA and we pushed that out all over the website and Facebook and I really liked that way to do it, um, and we could also. You know, have people to where they could mail, I know we had mail-in questions too that we got.
I think that's a great idea too, and I think in the survey monkeys, they can even put up, uh, you know, a. I think that's a great idea too, and I think in the Survey Monkeys, they can even put up a, you know, a spot for their own comments or questions.
Yeah. We did, honestly, I feel like the format for a town hall, we already have that down, and we've had so many public safety meetings. We have hashed it out a lot, and I just think we need to take the information. I do think that spreadsheet that we need to get together of all the other towns. Public safety fee, that's, that's a huge, that to me is the biggest piece of media that needs to be on that. So whatever Dawn has found, whatever info Bobby wants to find as well, that we could put on that spreadsheet, so. If I remember right, it was Bobby and Dawn that were gonna be a part of the subcommittee and and work on the town hall. Um, I personally would love to do it October twenty ninth, but um, I, obviously, we need the majority on board with it.
Um, well, can we get a raise a hand of who all's in favor of the twenty ninth at this point? Who else do we have? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, that's everybody, so.
Everybody but me.
Looks, looks like everybody's in favor of that.
Everybody but me.
But you, I meant that, I'm sorry. That's what I meant, agreeing with you.
Okay.
So. It seems like we should go ahead and plan for that, and then uh I can definitely what I'd like to do actually is put the document that I've created into a shared folder for the city. However, I have never been able to do that from my computer. I can't drop stuff into a city shared folder.
I can show you how to do it.
What city shared folder are you talking about? Are you talking about the Google, a Google Drive?
Yeah.
I'll show you how to do it, Dawn, after meeting.
Okay, I just was like.
Yeah.
Little drive, I got it.
I tried um to drag and drop just from my full, my drive.
Yeah, you don't, that's not how you do it.
Oh.
Have to open the file and you have to share the access and change permission levels. I'll show you after we get done.
I've done that, but I thought it only goes to then who you're giving it permission to, not to the shared folder.
Yeah, we can talk about it offline.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I want everyone to be able to see it, is my goal.
Yep.
Including, including Bobby.
Well, I'd like to be able to participate, and it, because I don't know what items you've tracked on there, what you.
So first, I'll share it directly, you've used Google Drive?
No. Okay, I'll have to give you a different email box.
Okay, because. Let me add it right here. Okay, so we're gonna do a little touch-up before we share it with the whole council to to uh finish the project that we were supposed to do together that I thought about. My apologies. And we have a date picked, so how do we want to, I I remember Bobby and I agreeing to do some of this research, but I didn't realize in any way, shape, or form that it meant we were planning the event.
No.
So.
We, what, what we discussed is that we would work on that spreadsheet with the different cities. I took down notes of what different things would be on the spreadsheet for what different information for each um city, and then we were gonna get with James and Colleen and work on the planning of the actual town hall.
Okay. So after this meeting, I think Bobby and I could work out how soon we can get this buttoned up. Um, it's probably gonna need to be within days so that we can start planning and pushing and advertising and soliciting for questions for the town hall. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
All right, do we have?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Sorry, we have hands up. Oh, uh, go ahead, Audi.
I moved to reschedule the public safety fee uh community forum to Saturday, October twenty ninth at six PM at Oak Ridge High School Auditorium. Pre-planning work parties will be on.
I don't. You don't, you don't need to add that part.
Okay, just.
Leave it as, yeah.
School auditorium.
I'll second it.
Do you got all that, Jackie? Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Sledon, seconded by Mayor Hollitt. Do we have any more discussion? All right, Jackie, can you call for the vote? Counselor Bjarnson.
Hi.
Counselor Sledon.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Name.
Mayor Hollis.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker.
I, sorry about that.
Okay. That motion passes. So our next item on the agenda is business from the city administrator. Do you have anything else to share with us, James?
I I do have a a few things. I'll try to be quick and relate, but um obviously, calling in our League of Oregon Cities Conference uh through tomorrow afternoon, it's been very helpful. The other thing I wanted to address is I've seen an article in Highway Fifty-Eight Herald uh today regarding the the dispatch contract that we've had for police and fire with them that they no longer want to do.
Sorry, who, who no longer wants to do it then, no?
No, sorry, uh, the Herald reported on it that LCSO, who we currently contact with for for dispatch services, no longer uh wishes to dispatch for us, uh which is fine with us. It's a, you know, relationship that maybe wasn't working out as best as it could for both sides. So I was just gonna mention that, you know, it's not quite the crisis that some people may think it is. Uh, yes, the original deadline uh was October first, but that had that we're already in the works to extend that, uh and it has been extended to July first. Uh, there, I think there was some concern brought up with to me that uh that we were inactive uh on the issue. That's not accurate. It's been discussed at every single staff meeting for the last three months since it occurred. Um, and we've been soliciting bids from other cities with dispatch services, and we do have interested parties in that. Uh, I I have not brought this to council yet uh because we don't have those, we we want to get as many bids as we can so that we can get the best price and also give council choice in the matter, so. Point is, is, you know, we haven't been hiding this issue, it's just there's nothing to bring to council yet. There's nothing for council to decide yet. Uh, when there is, um, we will bring those bids, those written bids uh to council and also recommendations. Because some dispatch centers have more experience dispatching uh fire departments than others. So that's been a consideration in our discussions. So there there are those considerations, and you will have staff recommendations a- as well from police, fire uh and myself, so you'll be fully briefed to make that, make those choices. So, you know, I and I I'm sorry if anyone feels that that, you know, council should have been addressed and we should have been addressing this in council at every council meeting. Apologize for that. I just, there was nothing for council to decide. It, moving forward, if, if you, if council would like me to brief them on every project I'm doing and the city is doing, that's totally fine, but in order to do that, we would need to add it at minimum one hour to every council meeting so that I could discuss all all the things that we're doing, or we could go to a council meeting every week. Um, is the other way to do it, just because there's, there's a ton going on. And I bring everything to council when there's something to decide, but that that's, that's my recommendation, so. If if we want to to do that.
Um, James, I have a quick question on that, and I see there's some other hands up from counselors. Question is, I remember hearing about this, I don't know, months ago.
Right.
Counselor, what, but uh, so I um happened to come across a meeting, I was reading the minutes of a meeting from I don't know, maybe a year ago, a year and a half ago, where we actually signed a contract with LCSO for dispatch services for twenty-two and twenty-three. So you might wanna look at that contact. Um, as I, I understand they would like to notify that they aren't interested in continuing, but uh the contract might say otherwise.
Well, in in the contract, there is a provision that um either side can break the contract uh with a certain amount of notice, uh which is probably why they picked the day. I think it's ninety days or something. So there there is a provision on, it can be broken early with the required notice.
So you've already renegotiated an extension on that, is that what you're telling us now?
Yeah, it's being extended through until the next fiscal year, so through the end of June. Um, we we anticipate we will be changing dispatchers a lot sooner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call on a couple counselors, probably on the same topic. Uh, Mayor Hollitt would be first.
Yeah, I haven't read what the Herald's um story was on this, but I do want to just say that James has been very open and honest with um the, the situation with the dispatch, and I was aware of it. And I think a few counselors were aware of it, and staff has been working on getting um new bids, and that takes quite a while because we are a distance away from dispatch services. So they have to look at our equipment, they have to look at our call numbers for police, for fire. There's a lot of um information that goes into it, so it is taking a process. And I just wanna make sure everyone knows, by no means has James or any others of the staff been hiding this. It's been, it's been known, so it just, like he said, there isn't any information yet until we have bids in front of us to look at, so, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Bjarnson.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mayor, and thank you, James. Um, I just wanted to put in my two cents about I don't think we need to go to a meeting every week or add an hour onto our meetings to get a rundown of your hourly business. James, I think you're doing a great job, and I do think that you bring things to us when we actually have decisions to make and things to discuss, which I appreciate. And I don't think we need to conduct city business based on the Herald's overblown outrage or fear mongering. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Hooker?
Yeah, I um, I have to say that I agree a hundred percent with both Mayor Hollitt and with uh Counselor Bjarnson. I for one believe that James and Colleen will bring us whatever we need to know about in a timely manner, and I trust them over pretty much anybody. So um, you guys are doing a great job. Kudos to you. Keep doing what you're doing. Thanks.
Mayor, your hand's still up, is that just, do you have something new?
That's an old hand, thank you.
Okay, um, James, did you have more you wanted to share with us?
Uh, yeah, just a couple more items. Uh, I I wanted to, to mention, there was a flood last week at the industrial park. Our sewer main, the big main broke. It then spilled over into uh where the firemen are camped out and washed away tents. Uh, if we lost over a million gallons. Uh, so the reason I mention this is, uh, you know, it could have been seriously catastrophic. Uh, Robert Christman jumped on that, and we only lost about a million gallons of water. But, you know, reservoirs were getting low. It was, it, um, I talked to Ed, our city engineer, about it, and uh he was amazed at how quickly Public Works was able to fix that. So I just wanted to give some kudos to Robert Christman, because it was the water main at the end, so the only people that lost water service was Public Works. You know, if it happened somewhere else, yeah, it would have been bad, but I'm, within hours, he dug that thing up. So kudos to Robert Christman and the rest of Public Works staff for that. Yeah, the, a couple other just small things, uh, commu- the Community Wildfire Defense Grant that we were uh going to apply for. Uh, there was, this is a brand-new grant, this is the one that we, that was up to ten million dollars. Uh, unfortunately, the way the feds wrote it, they they kept saying that there was a twenty-five percent match for any project unless you are an underserved community. In other words, poor, which we definitely qualify for. And it said that throughout the entire application, but then in this, not really in the small print, in their interpretations. Underserved communities are based on the county's economic data only, and unfortunately, Lane County doesn't qualify. Um, oh. We've made our uh irritation known to the federal government. They've already taken some steps to remedy that, because obviously, we're we're not the only ones complaining about this. And so uh they, it's normally, was gonna come up once a year. Uh, now the deadline, they're having a new uh deadline for spring, so. We're gonna have a second bite of the apple, and then hopefully they will fix that problem, so we don't have to do that match. The county did put in a small ask uh for this first round, which includes money for mitigation in Oak Ridge. If if they get the money, uh, that will come to Oak Ridge, it's been earmarked for us to start a mitigation project, but they also held off on their big asks in hopes that for the spring, these issues will be fixed, and even in their application, they can say, you know, we want whatever five million dollars for Eugene projects, where they'll have to come up twenty-five percent. A million for the Nida, million for Oak Ridge, whatever, with no match. Anyway, I just want to bring council up to speed on that. Um, that that's been very frustrating, but it has been addressed, and and we will be applying in the spring for that. Uh, what else do I have? Oh, I just want to make sure people were reminded, and and hopefully everyone's been contact, contact at this point about the uh candidate's forum for city council and mayor on Saturday the fifteenth, six thirty PM at Oak Ridge High School, just as an announcement, and.
Is that something we're doing?
That's put on by the Chamber of Commerce. It'll be.
Say the dates again.
That is Saturday, uh, October fifteenth. That is Saturday, October 15th at 6:30 PM at Oak Ridge High School.
Okay, it's fine, okay. Okay, keep going.
I think that, that's about it. I mean, there's lots of stuff going on, but I think that's the, yeah, yeah. That's the meat and potatoes of it.
Thank you, James. Okay, the next and almost final item on the agenda is another session for public com. Oh, before I move into public comment, Audi, Counselor Spleenaw, is there something you wanted to add?
Yes, I, I wanted to find out, are we supposed to submit our questions beforehand or we do it at the forum?
That's probably a question for the Chamber of Commerce. James, you're muted.
Awesome. I, I attended the meeting, I can't remember what they decided on, on how they were going to do that. I know there will be an opportunity for the public to ask questions, but I can't remember if they were going to set something up ahead of time or if you had to submit the question at the forum.
So do you know the person in charge of the, to ask that question?
Yeah, if you go to the, the Chamber of Commerce website, there is a, you know, contact us button. And they should be able to answer that question.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, so I'm going to open up for public comments again. Do we have any public comment here in the room? No, do we have any public comment online? I just, any hands? Looks like Dan, you're lighting up, are you trying to talk to us?
Yeah, I was trying to raise a hand, so just unmuted and figured I'd jump in. Monica, Dan Barkley, same address, and guys, and so on and so forth. First off, if Chief Martin is still in the room, do me a favor and email me a copy of the oath you administered to the new policeman that we were sworn in tonight. That oath far exceeds exponentially, the oath administered to elected officials. And quite frankly, the half a dozen or so I took and repeated over a 25-year career. And very, very good. And I had opportunity to work with Shane and Val Miller and the manager at the Blue Wall. And the end result was, we got a drunk driver off the road that they would not have known otherwise. So policing is a partnership between citizens and, and OPD. It's, it's not adversarial, it's, it's a partnership. And just for clarification, Rick Zelcer was initially brought on as the assistant to the city administrator that the following year became Community Services Director.
Coordinator.
Oh yeah, I still got the mic, okay. At any rate, and quite frankly, I was a little bit nervous that a professional mapmaker would, you know, do the job, but I have to admit, Rick was always professional, did a great job, in my opinion. And, you know, good call. But he was brought on as the assistant to the city recorder, not the community services director. If you want to go back in time to the community services director, you need to go back to 2011, when we actually had and lost the community services director about June, July that year. And the revenue source for, for that income, which was roughly the same, came in three pretty equal parts between water, wastewater, and streets, period. No administrative overheads, no nothing, about $20,000 each from each fund. And that's, that's how that was subsidized. And lastly, this, this letter that appeared in the Herald, for those that like to connect the dots, bear in mind, the date on that email was seven to 10 days after James Clevenger was hired as a city administrator for Oak Ridge. And in that article, one of the people that weighs in with an opinion is the county district attorney that he ran against and came up short in an election. So there's some underlying currents there that not all the information, sometimes you got to connect the dots. And I'm not a big fan of coincidence. A week after, after he was hired, his former opponent in a, in a, in a special election, general election, whatever it was, is weighing in and trying to cancel the contract. I think it goes beyond the Sheriff's Department. And that's just my opinion, but I did want to share that. But yeah, Chief Martin, if you can send me a copy of that, I'll never use the, the degree I have as, as, you know, criminal justice degree, I'm too old for it and, you know, chase some bad guys around, I'm too old for that. But send me a copy of that, I'd, I'd like to just have it. That's just stellar, stellar oath.
Can you send me a test email? I just looked at my email, I couldn't find your email. So could you send me?
No, I, I give it to you real easy, cascadingmotel@highmail.com.
Okay.
Okay, but, but that was great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment? Okay, that is the last item before we will, I will adjourn this meeting. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye. Good night, everyone, hope everybody gets better.
Thank you.